I can call the meeting to order if we could. First order of business is to announce the next hearing, which is November 17th at 8:30 a.m. Next, I'd like to swear in the staff with all of those who are here from the staff of the city of Columbus and intend to testify in any way, raise your right hands. You swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So say I do.
I do.
Chris, thank you. Are you with the city now? And next, we'll have the roll call, please, Louis.
Yes, Steve Woodman.
Here.
Mike Plus.
Here.
Bob Lurkerson.
Here.
Danny Maniaci. Ed Hardesty.
There.
Tony Slannick. Ricky Bartley. Otto Beatty.
Here.
Eric Riddler.
Here.
We have four of them.
Thank you very much. Would you review the, do the overview of the hearing format, please, Louis?
Sure. So for the hearing format, city staff will present application materials. Advocate will then be sworn in and asked to present any additional materials. The commissioner will discuss the case. Registered speakers will be sworn in and provided three minutes to speak each. So please keep your public comments three minutes each. And commissioners will then discuss the case and ask questions if needed, and then possibly pass it over.
Very good. And with that, we will ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Can I have a motion to do so?
I move.
Is there a second, please? Are there any questions, comments, additions, deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Let's just move on to the first case, please.
Okay, first case is 150 East Broad Street. Here is its location on the map at the corner of Broad, East Broad and South Fourth Street. Here is the building itself. It's not historic, or we've registered or locally registered building nationally, or but it is, actually, I don't know, but it's national. It's not local. You can see it is a building with quite a bit of people architectural details. I don't know if this is terracotta or some stone. This is where the sign will go on the corner, right here. Here's just a preview of what it would look like. It would be sitting right here on the southern side. So, to the staff, before we pull up the case materials. So the applicant is proposing a projecting sign on the south elevation approximately 18 feet above grade. The sign will measure 28 inches wide by 96 inches high and consist of vinyl text and graphics on a non-illuminated aluminum body. So this sign is not illuminated. The sign will be anchored into the facade. So projecting signs are preferred in the downtown because it is a pedestrian-oriented district. They should be proportional to the building and minimum 10 feet of clearance should be maintained, which this sign does have. However, the insulation we signed should be reversible and avoid permanent alteration or damage. So in summary, the proposal generally meets the guidelines regarding graphics. Although in order to avoid permanently damaging the facade, the fasteners could be mounted through the masonry joints and not the masonry bases as the commissioner were to so choose. That, the applicant is here to discuss it, and I do have the...
Is the applicant here, please?
Yes, sir.
Can you come up and join us? Thank you very much. Would you please identify yourself?
My name is Steve Moore. I'm with Moore Signs.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Do you need to tell us anything, or are you here for questions? Anybody have a question?
I'm here to answer any questions that might come up.
I think we can see what they've got from the drawing. Do you have an issue with trying to put the fasteners into joints rather than through the stone of the thing? Is that, have you looked into that at all?
If you look at the stone, you can see that there's already some anchors that are in the stone.
Yeah.
Where they went into the joint on the top of the plate and they had to go into the bottom of the plate through the stone.
Are you intending to use those, then?
No, no, I would, I would take the time to take those out. They look pretty bad. I think our sign's kind of in a different area. They probably, we couldn't trust them through engineering. So I'd clean that up and try to do the same thing. We might be able to make plates big enough to cross over both sets of joints.
Show us where the sign on here would be.
So the bottom of the sign, yeah, there you go.
Oh, I see.
Here are the existing bolts.
Yeah, the existing bolts are just below where we're putting it.
Okay.
So we could make an effort to make those plates big enough that we could cross over both sets.
Any questions or comments from the commission, please? What's the pleasure?
I move approval of the nine with the plates enlarged to engage the, the joints to make.
Yeah, we'll get the motion on the tables. There's a second, please. Okay, so we have a motion. Does that work for you, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's a motion. Apparently works for the applicant. Any questions from the audience? Any other questions from the commission? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Steve, provide a second.
I'm sorry?
Provide a second. Oh, Tony, you're here, okay.
The guy hiding behind you in the corner.
Thank you, Louis. Thank you.
Didn't say it well. No, thanks for sure.
Next case is 50 South Grand Avenue. Put the location on the map. This is at the corner here, the north east corner at South Grand and Oak Street, at the new multifamily development going in there, mixed use. And they're installing a private art piece on the southeast corner of the building. It will be located on the ground floor of the building. It was viewed conceptually at the 1022 2019 meeting, the downtown commission. The artwork consists of black, of a black and white picture created by placing a pattern of laser cut holes in an array of aluminum panels. The applicant provided the following narrative, but I won't get into that. It's just basically, it's a scene from Greta Garbo and John Gilbert. The guidelines state that art should be evaluated based on artistic quality and excellence, appropriateness to the site, originality, permanence, safety, feasibility, maintenance, and other requirements. Integration of art in larger development projects is encouraged. Works of art should be designed and installed so as to not damage or visually obscure contributing buildings or building elements. In summary, the proposal generally meets the guidelines with regards to private art. I did take some sight as a picture. It's still under construction. You can see it will be going down here on the ground floor of the southeast corner. This is what the building looks like right now. This is looking north, looking east. Close up of where that sign will go.
I didn't, oh, is the applicant here, then, please?
Yeah.
Could you both identify yourselves, please?
Yeah, John Rewald with visiting companies.
David Goff with Blood for Russia.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So say I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Is the sign only on the west side of the building?
No, it's on the south as well.
So does that mean there are two of them?
It is one single piece of work.
Ah, that's okay. I had a confusion of that.
This is really just a continuation of, you know, his commitment with the earlier phases of Library Park. You know, we were here earlier this year, late last year. Kirk Mangus mural that we put on phase two of Library Park at the intersection of Library Park and Ninth. The whole goal with this overall development is then to create an interesting pedestrian experience, whether it's walk-ups, whether it's public art, and this is in line with our commitment as affirmed to living in art, both public facing as well as curated art within the building itself. So, and as you may recall, this is a reinterpretation of an existing mural that's on the Kramer Engineering Building immediately to the east of our project that is obscured for the most part by our building. You know, folks were drawn to that. And it was a significant piece of art within the neighborhood initially. So, you know, our intent was to reimagine it when we were in front of the commission previously. We had shown this image, you know, we studied some other things, but ultimately landed that this was the most appropriate, you know, to pay tribute to what was there previously and reimagine it and focus on, you know, how folks are interacting with it. So Dave can speak more technically to what we're doing and how to you. And we're happy to answer any questions you have, but excited to continue injecting public art into the discovery district.
Yeah, Don's got a good summary, and I have with me a little bit of some of the materials. Basically, it's a black and white image that we're starting with. And so the, the nature of the medium is a perforated metal panel. And so the perforations obviously create the black. And then the, the white aspect is what the nature of the panel itself is. And what you see in the renderings, there's predominantly a, it looks a little warmer tone in the rendering there, but the, the whole first floor is a metal panel that is in this pewter color. And then we were basically looking at one of two sort of, this is slightly more white. This is a little bit more of a brushed stainless kind of appearance. So in essence, when you start perforating, that, that gives you the sort of white, the black on the white, basically, which is in the spirit of the, the image itself, basically. The other thing that, if it's helpful, I mean, we trade our best to represent what this is going to look like in the, in the imagery that's in front of you. I have, I can circulate a couple of sets of supplemental images by this manufacturer that is, shows you other installations or how they're successful at taking a picture and turning it into a perforation and what that actual effect looks like. So that's just more for reference.
At night, from the outside, looking in, it's been illuminated inside the building. That's, I think, a lobby area behind. What do you see? Is it somewhat translucent or is it more opaque?
No, it is actually, it almost, the image almost reverses itself in terms of what was light during the daytime and what was dark, almost reverses because you do get some light source from the interior space. We aren't adding any other supplemental light to this. It's, it is intended to kind of keep both public art and kind of a, a bit of a veil, if you will, to the glass on that corner.
So if you see inside, like you see people walking inside, or you say you can't see?
Yes. Yes, yes, exactly.
And there's a recess for the storefront there. That outdoor area is off our lobby coworking lounge, and there is private outdoor space in kind of cafe seating for those folks as well, framed by lanterns. So folks could actually be out there.
In the daytime, looking out, you can see out.
Exactly.
Yes, and again, some of the images of circulating there, there's one or two of them of what it looks like from behind. But you get, I think that might answer your question.
Are there other questions for the applicant? What's the pleasure of the group here? Thoughts? I'll move for approval. Okay, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second, please? There is a motion on the floor. Any questions or comments from the audience? I, I think it's great. I like it. It's fun.
And just for the record, choose the audience, sir.
Yes. Thank you very much. I think it's also you, you, I think originally you were proposing a longer hard time, weren't you, along the wall there? This is actually kind of a disaster. Or is, is it, am I getting that wrong?
That first project of, but then the other going.
Okay, so I'm dealing with computer, more, more computer. Good, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, you say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thanks very much. I think it's great.
Okay, Steve.
David's gone.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, next case.
The next case is 100 North High Street. They're proposing construction of a 15-story mixed-use structure at a location currently occupied by a service parking lot. The design includes 152 residential units, a rooftop amenity lounge, a pool, ground floor commercial space, fourth floor office space, and a 375-space parking garage. Garage will also provide spaces for the renovated buildings directly to the south, which was previously approved by the downtown. High Street streetscapes, streetscapes will be updated from the northeast corner of Gay and High Street up to the northern edge of the 100 North High Street property. And the building's materials, we break metal panels, stucco, treated wood, ceratoclast panels, and an aluminum window system. And they're also have a space for private art to be located on the ground floor. Here is the location of the building from the street view, or the spaces. Here's Long, here's Gay, here's High Street. It's this large parking lot. Here are the atrium lots in the north, the White Haynes Building, south. It appeared conceptionally at the July 2021 meeting. The packet was provided. Some of the feedback in general was that the first floor was a bit too short. The front door was a bit too small. The colors, they could be, the building could be a little bit more colorful. That's pretty much the gist of it. In response to the feedbacks, some of the changes from the conceptual review include increasing the visual height of the ground floor, changing the color palette, modifications to the entrance, and providing additional views showing the relationship of the building with the atrium lots. Analysis is that the downtown design guidelines state that the tallest buildings in the downtown should be focused on the High Street and Broad Street corridors and on Capitol Square. The commission encourages maximizing the investment potential of a given site and stresses compatibility with the surroundings. Ground floor uses on major commercial streets should consist of retail, restaurants, drinking establishments, arts and entertainment uses. And to minimize the effects of structural parking, ground floor, retail, residential, and obvious issues should be encouraged. Building should be of high quality and workable. So in summary, the proposal generally meets the guidelines related to building design, height, materials, and parking. The applicant has provided additional construction and product materials, and they should return for final approval of a private art, graphics, and lighting. At this point in time, they're just looking for the placeholder of the... With that, we have the applicant.
Okay.
Would you like to see the site? This is a picture, please. Here's the site. Here's the atrium loft on the left. Right? These are the buildings on the south, which are owned by the same builder that are being renovated. This is the parking lot. And the side of atrium lots.
Okay, would you please identify yourselves? Could you identify yourselves, please?
Nick Munoz with Myers &amp; Associates.
Kurt Miller with Myers &amp; Associates.
Chris Myers with Myers &amp; Associates.
Okay, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So say I do.
I do.
Kurt Miller.
Kurt Miller, thank you.
Okay, cheers. Go ahead.
All right, good morning, Eric.
By the way, Chris, we've seen this a couple of times. Why don't we kind of focus on maybe some of the changes and adjustments you perhaps might have known?
Sure, just to give you a very brief update on the rest of the development. As you know, we're basically redoing the entire block down to Gay Street. 66 North High, which is building over the corner of Gay and High, is currently in its beginning stages of construction. That's a street-side cap net. And then our 72 to 88 North High, which is the Madison and White Haynes buildings, those had actually received state preservation tax credits. Those are also in stages of construction as well. Today, we're here to focus on 100 North High, which is a new building. Ed Lewis, as I mentioned, it's a 152-unit apartment project. It also has a 375-space parking garage, which is total of 15 stories above grade and one below. We're going to go through today addressing some of the items that we had discussed in our last meeting through some renderings and some updates, specifically on that first-floor streetscape on High Street, and also some of the coloring, colorization and material selections of the building. With me today is Nick Munoz and Kurt Miller, both on our architectural team working on the project. And with that, I'll let Nick and Kurt kind of walk us through the design deck.
All right, so yeah, looking at the site plan, I think we, we haven't made any adjustments here. I think we indicated the streetscape improvements, which we sent, I think, the more developed plans as part of the follow-up to Louis. But the intent is really to, you know, to fill in that empty, empty kind of institute space in the High Street streetscape between historic preservation projects and the atrium lots. As Louis mentioned, Chris mentioned as well, we've received some great feedback in our last meeting here. And we really kind of tried to bring those comments into, into this revised version. So I think the, Kurt can walk through some of those updates.
So this overall view here, showing our presence in the streetscape here and our relationship to it, also showing the, the adjustment to the color palette, taking some of that feedback from the last time and took a cap showing some of that to differentiate such a kind of a large footprint building to break it down into a little smaller scale rhythm to, to play with and relate to historic context along this stretch of High Street. Showing it kind of in the other direction, that's the atrium loss. And then showing a little bit more zoomed in view, showing the streetscape along High Street, and then the adjustments to that ground floor entrance, both to the left or more to the left there next to the boulevard piece is the main entrance to the residential lobby. And then to the right of that, kind of the second circular, you know, plaza that we're showing is a placeholder for the entrance to the, to the restaurant or retail ground tent, ground floor tent there.
So, so this was one of the views we focused on in our last conversation, particularly addressing some of the approachability of that front entry. This is a restaurant space over to the right, and also the entry for High Street access to the apartments above. You notice we also have some streetscape landscaping edges, our landscape architect on the project. And also, as we'll be back before you in the future with some art selections being represented as part of an art piece on the High Street facade. But this was one of the views that had most of the attention since our last conversation, specifically looking at material and scale and height and proportion of that entry element.
And while we're looking at this, any questions about this specific element of the design entries in the district?
Okay.
Good, okay, thanks, Steve.
Yep, and then too, just kind of highlight that the brick kind of counter piece that we're showing is working to stitch the taller portion of the building back to the historic Madison White Haynes project. It's also helping kind of our similar historic approvals and tax credits to help shields for those newer openings in that facade for those apartments, and also stitching and connecting that whole kind of, in the streetscape as well. We're also showing more comprehensive overall views of the building in its context, kind of show as much of the building as we can and how it relates to the very urban context around it. So the southwest corner here, southeast corner, we also added a bit more design concept and information on that rooftop on many events for the residents of both this building and the adjacent historic buildings as well to activate that roof and take advantage of its views. Kind of coming around to show a relationship to the north as well, the atrium lots, and really showing the relationship of our courtyard to the adjacent atrium lots and to their atriums to provide more information on how we are, are working with that. And kind of doing the full circle here as well. How far are you off of the atrium building? We are roughly about a foot off of it. We're pretty tight to that, to that. We will be looking on detailing to kind of waterproof and see if that connection to us. You want to talk a little about, about structure immediately?
Sure, sure. So between, between conceptual meeting and July, now over the past couple of months, we've had some visits to the atrium lots building and that with the condo association president reviewed, primarily reviewed their basement structure to confirm the depth of their foundation walls to see if any underpinning or special protection, shoring, things like that would be required at the foundation level. We found that their ceilings actually extend to about 16 feet below grade. So our basement won't extend that far down. So it's actually, I think, good news for, for the relationship of our building and that building in terms of the foundation. And then we also took a closer look at that south-facing kind of blank brick wall and, you know, how it will flash essentially between our raised landscape roof area and their existing masonry wall there to essentially pretend that gap between the two buildings. We also looked at, looked at views and tried to make some, you know, make some renderings to demonstrate what views they could anticipate from their upper-level apartments, which will not be, you know, entirely the wall that will be used kind of into our apartment, our north-facing and east-west-facing apartments that are over in that interior rooftop corner.
And this view was, was created to show our relationship of that courtyard, the parking structure of the residence to the surrounding context. Our intent for this courtyard is for it to be a landscaped kind of cap on that parking garage for those units you loop down into as well as elevating it to make it an amenity or a, or a draw for those courtyard units. Since we do have a certain number of updated faces in that courtyard, we want to make sure that it's almost kind of like a home of spite from maybe downtown urban living. If you want to kind of live downtown but don't want to be on the bustle of High Street, you might have a nice kind of secluded courtyard to look into. So that, that's being considered as well, showing that relationship. And then Nicholas, who that view misses from the top floor, atrium lots looking towards our building and up on that upper roof area. So there will be some views into our courtyard as well. So being aware of what that looks like, not only for kind of our project, but as well as neighbors kind of depending to you as well.
If you recall last presentation, you also shared some sun studies that we had gone through in looking at the impact on the south elevation of the atrium loft building. And this is, you know, in addition to the conversations we've been having with the neighbors to our north, is really what, what in the end would you be seeing from the space if you have in your apartment?
What's the material on the outside of the building if we're looking at?
Yes, so the courtyard will be, we're looking at an AC and metal panel. And then the, the north wall, remind me the term, which is the, so.
AC.
AC, waterplate for our fire separation rating. We're working with the manufacturers of that product to address that finish so that we can close the, be durable and kind of a high, high, higher quality appearance as well and kind of control some of our joints and things to correspond to these and things.
So one of the topics of discussion is really materiality, color, and things like that. So we'd be happy to kind of get into the specifics going around the building. It's being developed as really a four-sided building with, you know, consistency of materiality all the way around. In your packet is identification of each of the areas, but we're going to, we'll use the renderings to kind of walk you through where each of these are.
Oh, so yeah, we created this diagram to illustrate the zones of the materials that we're using. So the top left, the base there, we're showing a masonry durable base. I'm considering High Street corridor, a lot of foot traffic. Use and interaction with buildings, creating a durable base is important for the project. The frame, primary field, secondary field, vertical, well, actually, the remaining five we're identifying as varying articulations of AC and metal panel, playing with the color and kind of the breakdown of those joints to articulate the different compositionally elements of the building, so from the frame to field and accents, using that material. Using the same material is also beneficial that we can maintain a safe level of detailing and safe level of structural and detailing of that product because it's all one manufacturer, one set of details that'll help the constructibility of that as well. So really looking at basically kind of a high and durability and high quality products, to Chris's point, on all, on all four sides of the project. We do have breakdowns of individual kind of products that we included in here as well, especially invited on these. Yeah.
I had a question about, I think it's the vertical element, the metal panel there. Is that a, is the finish on that match? Or is that going to have some? Or is that going to have some satin or sheen to it?
So the, the building has a combination of matte and satin finishes on the metalwork in the more gray and darker tones, those sort of matte finish. And then where we have the, the sort of the accent finish, more of a coppery tone that has the satin.
So the large vertical element would have the satin?
Correct.
And I think that's great because I was thinking that the very large element, and unless you were going for something really monolithic, I think the satin might be able to pick up the surrounding colors and create a type of subtlety.
It also is the, it, it's the background panel for that street side art piece. And so it's really the line that brings you down to the street scape where there's the future. We've also gone through and have included a, a lot of the products and materials, not just fixed facade materials, but also window systems, railings, masonry units, roofing materials. We do have a rooftop venue, which is, there's a small dog park, there's a pool, there's a, a gathering space, there's a fitness center. And so the amenity space up above, it's mostly glass, but it also has a lot of the same accent finishes that you see throughout the building. The owner of the development is very, very fond of Mecian buildings in New York and Chicago. And so our left side building is, is sort of palleted based on that, that darker charcoal gray, if not black finish. And what we wanted to do was really articulate the scale of that portion of the building by creating contrast and separation in some of the other colorization and forms to the adjacent side. Now it's a, it's a one building plan, but it's a multiple building facade. And again, as, as Kurt had demonstrated in some of the first renderings that showed in context, it's really to address the street scape and scale variations that you see on High Street and are threading back to the White Haynes building to the south and the atrium loft building to the north. So we have the efficiency of a single planned building, but we have the detail of a multiple facade structure.
Is there a building that comes out where the sculpture garden is?
Yeah. So you can see over on the right side, those, those three days, which are the five stories of kind of the brick connect.
And that's a new structure, right? So we're taking out the one that's there and putting in another one. Is that right?
There was a building there that was
Oh, that's how it's already gone.
Three or four years ago.
Some bank. So that was actually part of the state preservation office request because we're making modifications to the north facade of the White Haynes building. And for the convenience of those units that are in that building, what they asked for is if we can somewhat shield those from the, the, the view from a pedestrian on High Street. So what they asked for in the addition of this new building is we do a four or five story structure to kind of block that view to see any of the alterations to the north facade of the White Haynes.
You can kind of see the depth of it there on the left. It's getting narrow, but rather than kind of creating just a, a, a screen wall, we expanded the wall and programmed it to have some space. The ground floor will be the, the retail rent tenant.
Restaurant.
The second floor, that would be the private dining for that restaurant. The third floor is kind of a double height space, maybe a floor and a half depending on some mechanical equipment showing on that roof, but that's kind of an office tenant at the moment. And then we're also looking at this south facade, considering it's the view of the Madison building, kind of what that looks like as well. The sculpture garden isn't at, at the base here between that. So this, this space will also be considered kind of from a landscape urban context of what it feels like and hopefully it's active and kind of.
So the, you'll be looking at the open levels of the parking or a sculpture.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
So real quick, just Yeah, what's going to happen is I'll get you.
And we're showing kind of both ends here, some of that ventilated mesh as we talked about last meeting. Shooting some of those corners from those views to, to limit the kind of the views of that garage skies a little bit, but also letting it become a little bit more I guess honest of what it is, kind of getting that in our courtyard, kind of make it kind of an interesting graphic play up in that space and then using kind of some landscape and that, that sculptural programming to.
That's what I was going to ask was I can't remember. Is that open to the public? Can you walk in from High Street in, or is that a, a, kind of an interior space for the project?
It is, it is, it is kind of mostly interior. You can see through, you'll be able to catch glimpses of it from High Street through.
Through the restaurants.
But the, the intent and the concept is in the Madison White.
It's not a public space.
In the historic buildings, or talking, or they're talking with some the intent is really the experience of that sculpture running comes via access through those interior gallery spaces, which would be, they would be open to the public. So you walk through the gallery.
So the, the east end on the alley has an open secure gate, but the, the restaurant on High Street and then the potential gallery spaces in the White Haynes building. You go through the gallery to get to the art part.
So you're enhancing the alley experience.
Right. Yes. And the, the restaurant space on High Street, a sliver of a building as we showed on that street scape facade is, you know, large glass openings. It's large glass openings in the back as well. And the intent is nice weather, those are all open and you're seeing all the way through that 30 feet of space into the art part.
But that, that rental restaurant also has a patio space on High Street for those streets, those street scape also having one on the back in that courtyard. So if you were dining at the restaurant, you could sit on either.
That's, that's all on that site.
Okay. Good. Okay.
Looking at the back elevation again, this is facing the, the backside of the parking garage and also the back of the Marion Hotel. However, the connector that you're seeing on that left side, that's in the far distance. Again, that's way up on High Street, but in this flat elevation, you're seeing it relative to this east.
So what do you have a fence along there in the back?
An open iron gate.
Well, the, the lower two stories are a wall on the Pearl Street side with openings and open gate.
Same, same thing. Part of the preservation tax credit was something with permanence, something that, you know, looked as if it was part of that context and not just a chain link.
And to the, the idea too, if there's an, an opening or some kind of programmed event in that space, these openings can be opened for those events. So people can kind of, you know, build up and how it has, has needed for those events. So the idea that it's open, what it needs to is, is being taken into account. Just got other, other facade. It just shows that kind of height. Other perspectives show a relationship a little better, but we have it here. There's questions. And then we just got to have the updated plans that correspond with the views that we have. I don't feel major changes to these. I'll go a little bit quickly.
It's a combination of studio one and two bedroom apartments. As Kurt said, there's courtyard units and then perimeter units as well. This is our rooftop amenity. You'll note that we, we kind of pulled the occupied spaces south from what we had previously demonstrated. That was an intent to as an impact from that sun study that we went through and looking at atrium to just see, you know, how can we be a good neighbor? Kind of pull the form or shadow casting pieces of our building a little further south. And they're also lower in pitch to be able to address that as best we can. You can see there's an exterior rooftop pool gathering space on the, what is the lower left corner, which is the facing High Street. A gym, there's a small dog park, and then also utility services for the residents of the building.
I just had a quick comment about something you, you just said about pulling the spaces south. Ted, when I looked at some of the the perspectives in your package and I noticed, you know, the, how you make the sun angles and the shadowing. It looked like, I think it was the northwest corner was a particular issue. And I'm wondering if, because it looks like you've already pulled things back and you have a garden space. Do you have thought maybe at that corner to make maybe a couple of levels, like another level down and break that mass up a little bit, just so that more light can get into their skylight perhaps?
Yeah. When we, when we looked at that exact area, what we noticed is modifications in the height. Actually, the, the way the sun is hitting where we are on earth at this, at that location. It would, it would have meant carving out a number of floors all the way up to High Street and all the way down to the south and to have any meaningful impact or change. So this seemed to really create the most impact because again, the atrium building, it's, it's port Eric space still has two blank facades on the east and west ends that go up almost to the height of, of what we have. So where we do cast some shadow, it's actually casting shadow onto, you know, either their roof or portions of an exterior wall. So I, I think we've, we've made good attention to, you know, be as best we can to minimize some of that impact and give a view that's more substantial than just a, a blank facade wall and sort of the looking at the courtyard and our rooftop green spaces as well.
So the, the mechanical portions of the roof, that will be full of little.
I think we're going to have a few clusters of them and I think we're going to shield them with screens. We also have some other areas within the building that we think we might be able to locate some mechanicals, especially in the, in the sort of the dead areas of our garage. Anything that we do have that would be visible from any of the surrounding upper level conditions, we certainly want to treat them in a way that they're not just looking at a raw unit, but they'll be screened or placed in a way to be sensitive to them. Our, our final mechanical engineering design isn't complete, but that's certainly the intent is to make sure we, we kind of look good even from above.
We're currently incorporating about three and a half foot paravents. So our, our roof is, is fairly low from those paravents. The idea of some of those basically is just low. And then for a little higher than that, we can make sure that that's hidden. We'll, we'll definitely investigate to make sure that it's not top part. Back. We do here have more information on, on the super detailing of the project, showing the, the material coming around the balconies and the ground floor. If there's any questions about, about that detailing, we're showing that as well as kind of our overall building sections to relay how the building is kind of coming together. Flexes and areas. So any other items that are a question?
Anything else you need to review with us or? When we made our initial submitted one response back, we got from the city was, you know, potentially some supplemental more construction wall section details and things like that. Obviously there's thousands of details in a building like this. We, we made our best attempt at the ones that we thought might be relevant to today's conversation. More so relatable to finishes and materials, how things come together. We could certainly focus in on any detail specifically that you want.
Let, let's see what everybody, does anybody have a question or a problem of wall sections that we've done?
This is a very good simple, very important.
Yeah, I need this too. Okay. So I'm just going to say if we want it, we can talk about it. If we don't, let's keep moving then. Okay. Anything else from you folks?
I think that's, that's all we had. I hope we've addressed the items we've carried from last week and then, you know, in advancing the project, I think we've tried to adhere to the intent of the commission.
Okay.
With that, if you have any comments.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the audience where you'd like to speak? Okay. Would you come on? You can use that podium right over there if you'd like to.
Sure.
And could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Jim Talamo. I'm the owner of Pito for.
Okay. And Jim, Jim, with our protocol, we ask you to keep it to three minutes if you would please.
Okay. I know that I sent.
I beg your pardon. I don't think we're swearing witnesses from the audience. No, yeah, Jim, that's fine. Thank you. Thanks though.
I know that a couple of our residents have sent letters, emails to Louis, which I hope that he's passed along to you guys and sent one of them. I also sent a video from the view of my particular penthouse. I was I sent it yesterday. I thought our meeting was Thursday. So mostly what I wanted to just make sure was open in the public forum was the issue that our building has with the height of this building as, has been mentioned. The atrium is the home source of natural light, 433 of the 52 units in the building. And the current penthouses all have that beautiful south facing view. So we appreciate of course that there's courtyard. They're not just going to be staring at a blank wall. But it is a little bit concerning the issues that behind the building. So we also looked over at the Nicholas. The Nicholas has vacant first floor, I guess, commercial space. To the best of my knowledge, it has never been occupied by anyone. I really didn't keep track of that, but I also called the Nicholas yesterday. They currently have 27 vacancies in 230 apartments. It's a vacancy rate of 11.7%. The Columbus City vacancy rate, the city of Columbus vacancy rate is 0.7%. So our owners are questioning the need for 152 more apartments right next to our building in addition to the units that will be in the White Haynes building and the units across the way. There are several parking garages in the area, one directly across the street. The Long Street Garage is across the street, walk away. So there's plenty of overflow for parking in the area already. And we're questioning whether the six story units are the six floor parking garage if necessary. Or if some of it could be built underground simply to minimize a bit. Many of the issues that we have, everything, all of the issues that we have would be nonexistent if the height of this current building were at the level of ours. What was shown earlier was a sun study from the, the summer when the sun is the highest, I believe, in the packet. There is also a winter sun study that was provided. And the view shown from what we can expect in this meeting was from our roof, not from the actual units on that eight floor. So mostly the, the concerns with this loss of light are not only because of amount of what we wouldn't see, but also on property values. I don't think it's any real secret that atrium lofts, our building's not always valued particularly with all of the new builds and the tax abatements. There's not a, a lot of incentive to live in our building compared to other places around here where you have less taxes and you have more modern updates. I alone was able to argue $130,000 off of the proposed valuation of my unit simply because of what's happened with the building. And that loss of natural light is something that we believe is going to severely impact our property values.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience who'd like to talk today? Okay. With that, any other questions from the commission?
I think last time I asked what other cities, how other cities deal with kinds of issues and whether there are any legal concerns or social concerns. It seems to me this is a downtown area that I'm under the height. You're not sure there's anything that we should be aware of before we move forward.
Not seeking any variances to height. Just anything at all. So everything here, everything is vibrant and the downtown professional design.
I guess my concern is downtown is a community just like any of the neighborhood. And when you are starting on your planning as far as a architectural standpoint and engaging your neighbors, what types other than just the sun and what are the types of accommodations or let's say goodwill gestures are being made by Edwards as far as being a good neighbor to the atrium? Those are for sale units. And at this point in time, what you're seeing on the MLS is they are up for sale. And you are for lease. And I understand this is a bottom line issue, but it's also a neighborhood issue as well. And I'm just concerned as far as the negative impacts. I know that development is going to happen and it's going to have positive and negative impacts. But looking at the process that you go through from an architectural standpoint and working with your neighbors that are in the surrounding community, other than just the light components, what else is Edwards doing or even would like to do as far as being a good neighbor to not only far as being a good neighbor to not only atrium loss, but other neighbors that are within the area? I look at the amenities that you have. And, you know, that is what is happening all across downtown, particularly on High Street, when you're looking at LC, you're looking at two fifty and all the others that have been built. The other thing that I think is a concern when you're looking at the streetscape, going from Gay Street to where you are, is looking at what the vacancy rate is in downtown at this point in time and the additional units that are coming on. So those are just comments I just want to make for the record. I'm not making a decision or recommendations, but just want to bring those to the table.
I don't know if you want to address anything or comment. If you do, that's fine. If not, that's fine too.
Sometimes I wish I was Jeff Edwards, but I'm not, so I'll do my best to give you some reasoning. You know, amenities in a building like this are intended for the residents of the building. That's not new to the development process in the world. The eyesore that's there right now, empty vacant lot and buildings that are virtually condemned in the White Hanes and the Madison's, I think that, you know, the caring for the neighbors is, is, you know, the impact that Mr. Edwards is putting into the community when it comes to all of this redevelopment to improve all these existing buildings and supplement the process with this new building. Some of the vacancy across the street, I'm certain what he would say is a result because of the eyesore of our site. And when there's improvement to not only the east side of High Street, that will inherently create an impact to the west side of High Street when it comes to the leasability of those spaces and also the few units that are still available. The parking will have a combination of, obviously parking for residents and visitors to restaurant and retail and gallery spaces. However, it's also a public access for, for some conditions for additional parking. And as prominent as parking seems to be in Columbus, Ohio, having available parking on your site is a, it's a good draw for attracting visitors to restaurants and these retail spaces. One of the, one of the concerns, and we did study this significantly, is, is if we kind of push this thing further down into the, into the ground, you know, not only is it a significant cost difference, the deeper you go for structured parking, it also creates a deep concern for compromise to adjacent buildings and High Street. And so the evaluation by our structural engineers of what is the right adjacency level to be excavating for foundations and structural conditions to protect the atrium building, we think we're hitting it in kind of the, the right spot. Initial designs for this building didn't have a courtyard and in fact, it was taller. It was, it's more efficient as a linear building being taller with a single corridor going down the middle. And in fact, in this construction type, getting to that very, very high condition is approved. In fact, it's even encouraged by the city. So through the effort of, of being aware of our context and being aware of the residents on the atrium lot building, that's what drove this courtyard design and brought the building down to where the number of units, the number of parking spaces, it works for the development structure and the performer, the business plan for the property. So I think from a developer's perspective, again, sort of hoping Jeff would agree with me, I think from that developer perspective, the fact that there's a significant investment in kind of upgrading almost this entire block and the block across the street, I think that really is a great effort to improve the neighborhood, improve the community and the overall context.
I, go ahead.
I have a question. One thing you said that I thought was very interesting. So the amount of parking that you have is not just satisfying the people that are living in the building, it's also parking, public parking and parking for people coming into the restaurants, is that?
There'll be access for parking for use of amenities like the restaurant and some of the spaces adjacent for the galleries. This parking structure is also serving the units and leasable spaces that are in the White Hanes in the Madison as well as in the sixty-six North High. The buildings are actually all connected. There's a connector underground from the White Hanes to get into this. So for the convenience of, let's say I'm a resident in the White Hanes building, I would still park in this garage and have, you know, protected access to it.
From my opinion, I think, and I don't know, but let's say if, and I agree, you know, height is very good and on a street like High Street, but I think because of these particular concerns, I think if, let's say, the building were maybe a floor lower, maybe two floors lower, if that made a significant difference to the atrium loss and it isn't crucial for your parking, it's nice to have the, this other parking for people going to the gallery and this and that, but I think the main thing is to have the parking for the residents. And I think if you can look at that and maybe see with the sun studies if it makes a difference, I think that would be very beneficial because I do, I really like what Trudy said. I think it's true. Brooklyn is wonderful. This is a beautiful project, but still we are a community. And I think if we have a sensitivity to our neighbors, I think we all suffer in the end and we're a weaker city. And even though it might be harder to find the solution, I think it's the right thing to do. And I think when you do the right thing, the benefits long-term outweigh any initial convenience. That's just my thought. And I hate to see people having put an investment into something and being a pioneer and then worry about the future and their investment. And I think anything that can be done to make it, and I know you've done a lot already and I really appreciate it, but I think anything else that could be looked into or tweaked or anything that could be considered to make, you know, something significantly better for the atrium people, I think will be a really good step.
Okay, are there other comments? I think we need to, we have a proposal on us, in front of us, we need to take action on this. I would ask for a motion to get a motion on the table. I'm not going to cut off any kind of questions or comments here, but I think we should put a, a motion on the table and that should be a motion to approve. If everyone doesn't feel comfortable about it, feel free to vote the way you want to vote. But if I could have a motion, I'd like to keep this thing moving.
I'm moving.
There is a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to approve. Now, more questions, comments, anything else?
That motion should have it in the, come back with the public order.
I think it was, that was in the, I think it's actually in the.
We had the Stafford form.
Yeah.
Our graphics and lighting.
I thought it was in the application to begin with though, right? For lighting and graphics and art, is that right or not?
I just indicated that they.
Okay, so that, let's make that part of that motion with everybody's permission.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, so there is a motion on the table. More comments or questions? Anything from the audience? I, I guess what I would say is that it's interesting to me that there are numbers of units in the new project that are actually either in a courtyard that faces north and east and west and kind of enclosed, and then along the north side of the White Hanes building that look, that are north-sided units. So if we're talking about light, there's maybe direct light and there's other light sources, so just for what that issue is worth. Okay, any other questions or comments? There are certainly good comments, worthy comments. I'm going to ask for a vote then. All those in favor of approving the project, say aye.
Aye.
And let's just raise hands. Louis, you can.
Okay.
And those opposed? Okay, the motion carries, is that correct, Louis?
Motion passes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next case, Louis.
Yes.
Thank you, Bob.
Good. Next case, Astor Park, to the west of the new stadium. They are proposing construction of a five-story, two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-seven-unit residential building. They are seeking final approval of the building and associated exterior courtyard and courtyard landscaping. It will include two-story lobby amenity areas and townhouse entryway elements along the first floor, and the materials are listed here. They also provided a planting schedule. They did provide this narrative that was provided to the commissioner. It appeared conceptually at the February twenty twenty-one meeting and feedback was as follows. Muldersen stated that he thought it was very exciting and a great addition, felt that proposal looked terrific. And then he actually said that they have created this beautiful and artistic image, pretty positive. The analysis is similar to the previous one. I started won't read all of that regarding the designing, building, construction materials. It should have designs so that the primary facade addresses a public street and has functional front door pedestrian access. This one does have those units that walk out. In summary, the proposal generally meets the guidelines regarding building design, materials and landscaping. The applicant has provided additional construction and product materials. They should return for final graphics and lighting. I didn't make a site visit because it's still pretty much a construction area.
That would have been a pretty easy site visit.
Yeah. And so with that, we do have the applicant here, I do have their.
Okay, will the applicants join us, please? And would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Yeah, John Greenwald with the duty. Sam Lucino with Gitch Partners.
Jeffrey Pangone, S M K S K.
Okay, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So say aye do.
I do, I do.
Thank you.
So.
Now, just real quick here, we have seen this a number of times, so can you focus on maybe any kind of adjustments, changes you might have made since we last saw it? Thanks.
Yeah, we certainly can. We have examples that, Gerald Stinkels, you have that as well. I just add that we're, I'm here on behalf of duty and Haslam Sports Group, it's a joint venture between our groups. We're excited to build on the momentum of Lower.com field. And as you'll see, as, as my esteemed colleagues here roll through the design, very thoughtful about responding to the neighborhood stadium, the river, part of the Old Indian River, be very thoughtful of how everyone's been interacting. So that's Sam. All right, thank you.
Now, just the, we're doing apartments first, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will try to keep this as succinct to the point that's possible. We're all familiar with the site, general location. As we just discussed, this will be to talk about the residential portion, which wraps around six-hundred-and-eighty stall apartment grounds, which is being built by the city. Just to refresh everyone on the design concept, because of the great length of size throughout the site, the multiple phases, we do have these two sort of schemes that group this more near the top. One is called layered, one is called floating. And the idea really is that they both have sort of a grounded base. As they rise, they do sort of a little bit differently, but there's always a continuity in the design process, particularly with the roof lines. Some are shifting horizontally and some rise to break up massing of the size as we move around. This is a rendering that you have seen before, that we were here previously. Happy to share that not a whole lot has changed. The biggest modification we've provided is in the materials, we've selected a final brick, which is just a little bit different than what we have before. And the tone of wood seen in this presentation is a little bit lighter than the wood we presented previously. And that's really a matter of product that we chose to go with and the availability of colors that we had to work with. So we can pass those around if you'd like to see them. Otherwise, the composition here has not really changed at all. This is the main entrance and the lobby of this, this phase of the project. I think the last time we were here, this was not a five-story building. The connection between layered on the left and float on the right was open. In order to capture some more residential units, we elected to build over that. So the overbuild of the lobby is new. It's a single loaded corridor facing the inside of the courtyard. So the windows that you see here are actually front of house space for the tenants. At some levels, it's corridor and some levels, it's actually part of the amenity. As you move around to the south, to the northwest, now here, you can see the other typology, this layered scheme. And again, the only change here will be previously showed you this espresso color, the gray smoke color. Again, the only change is that light is on wood. That's in the detailed components that indicates the floor lines here.
Sam, it's the mortar and the dark, dark.
Sorry.
The mortar and the.
Oh, it's dark mortar, yes. It will be a black one. Okay, this is the general layout along the site. You see the main lobby there on Nordak at the top. And as you filter in through there, maybe able to look right through the amenity space into the integral courtyard there, you'll notice along the north on Nordak, the west on Nealon, we do have some stoops for direct access into some of the units. And then on the very east side, the northeast corner, the parking garage, we have a satellite lobby entrance as well. On southwest corner, we have another satellite entrance. So people will be able to get into the building at a number of different locations. There are no connections to the city parking garage on level one, but there will be connections to the garage on levels two through three. And I'll let Jeff walk through the site.
Thanks. Good morning, commissioners. So just a few details to catch you up on and, you know, reiterate the same story I've been sharing with you all along. We're building from a palette of materials, continent, the arena district and, and Astor Park, you know, around the stadium, the district and these new buildings. The primary materials that you'll find in the public right of way in the sidewalks, buff washed concrete, a mix of medium tone to gray pavers and granite curbs and red clay brick sidewalks. Just a quick enlargement of that north residential lobby, just to illustrate the materials, the connectivity. That lobby will connect in the future likely to a lobby across the street. Same material pattern or palette, and you can see some of the furnishings that we're suggesting in the bottom right-hand corner to supplement that entry. Not visible from the right of way, but visible from the public garage is the residential courtyard, resort quality spaces and programming, outdoor kitchens, pools, fire and a rich landscape planting palette. You can see the materials on the right-hand side, pavement materials and some of the furnishings and site architecture, if you will, the pergola number five.
That's one example.
Lots and lots of details in this entire deck. Louis suggested we give you a flavor of those things that happen inside the courtyard just to understand what's better happening there. And a really fantastic plant palette that surrounds our townhouse entries, if you will, a mix of the kind of, you know, shaded ornamental trees that you'd find in the arena district or in downtown Columbus, a mix of perennials, grasses and evergreens holding up the base of the building. Again, a landscape palette that should make for a great entry into the building and continue to build on that park in a park, if you will, aesthetic to the district. A pretty detailed plant schedule that I'm happy to walk through if you like. Hopefully you can read that tab since you're sitting right on top of the screen.
Thank you.
Louis, I think you may have lighting as a conceptual here for us rather than a final, but we have such little formal lighting on, on the project and, and small in scale that if we could include that in the recommendation, that would be great.
That's okay.
Great. And what, what you see. Great. And what, what you see here is just accent landscape lighting, a little bit of pathway lighting, a little bit of tree uplighting. Generally, the sorts of things that are nearly invisible to the naked eye unless you're looking for it.
And see where it's, where it's highlighted in red, is that where that?
Yeah, you'll see it framing the building. The, the red clouds, red circles indicate public street lights.
Does anyone have a problem with that in this case? I'm hearing no, okay.
Great, thank you.
I think we can go back, Jeff.
Fantastic. And just the same thing, interior lighting, happy to discuss this.
Anyone have a problem with the interior lighting? That's pretty much a developer thing as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Louis asked for some information on detailed grading. You know, the site is relatively flat, but we've got some great to deal with. Happy to talk about that. Kind of be respectful of your time here. Sam, I'll pass it back to you. There's a.
Yeah, there is. So it's just to give you a little more detail if you're interested. What I mentioned for us, guests come to the main lobby, they will be able to see right through the amenity buildings to the south and into the courtyard, so it should be pretty amazing. You'll notice that the stoops that engage landscaping occur, as I mentioned, at the north and the west. And the, the design of those has been done such that there are sort of knee-walls on the side that will be a consistent depth off of the building. But the stairs within them will change as the grade changes from the northeast to the southwest. There's a lot of three-foot grade change. So just wanted to point out that detail and connectivity to the landscaping has been through. This is an enlargement of the southwest entrance. The sort of orange color are amenity spaces, dogwash and bike storage. And the dark gray areas of subtraction loading there. This is where the pass-through edge. So if there is a need to get a van or some sort of loading to the central courtyard. This dark gray zone of the seating, I don't know about the best way to put it, but. It's here. That is an open-air connection. There's a gate at the front entrance here, so people will be able to get in.
Well, that won't, that doesn't do it yet. There's a laser that will on the.
This is bad.
See.
Okay.
Only a point, I can point.
That's okay. Thank you for your attention. That there is. And so that will be a moment of of a view created as people are walking by. And then on the northeast corner of the garages is the other lobby entrance, just to share with you. I think at one point we were talking about bringing trucks into the building. That's no longer happening. The loading, both cases will be done off the curb through more of a Sally Port load situation. So I think those are the major changes since we were. This is, if you're interested, the internal planning of the building, second floor, you can see where the lobby is double-height, on both the north and the south. Then we have a secondary amenity floor there, looking out over the internal courtyard. Level three is where you now see that single-loaded addition over the amenity building that was not there before. Got three units, three, four, and five facing south over.
That's an improvement. I think adding those units, pushing it back.
Yeah, it solved a lot of problems for us, actually.
More interesting.
And then here's level four and level five. The only changes that you're going to see here is in layered scheme, you'll see where the terraces.
On the west side, what is that little indentation in the middle there?
Yeah, so that is a little break between the layered scheme and the float scheme, and I'll show you that in elevation. It's just a little separation between.
Because I, when I was looking at it, one comment that I had was, I liked the break with the entrance. And I was thinking along that west side, there's no entry there.
Right.
It'd be, I was almost wondering why you didn't have it. But that may, that may work in terms of doing what an entry could do along there, which is just kind of make it look.
Yeah. We focused on the walk-up units as well, to, to break that up and pull our building out to the street as well on the west side.
Yeah, okay. Okay, let's keep moving and looking at some elevations.
This roof plan, if you're interested, we worked really hard, to some people's disdain, to keep the roof articulated and not be fake pyramids. But we do have a central zone there where that's a unit that's supposed to sit. These are the building sections. The left is a section through a float scheme. Center is a section through the amenity building. The right is a section through layered. You can see there as the terraces move in and out, how that affects the building. These are the materials that you have before you. Here, Bobby, you can see the dark grout. Brick. The main change this last time is letter B, the fiber cement. That's spruce. It used to be a different wood altogether. This is the north elevation, just indicates where everything is, east and west elevations. So you can see layered, float here together. And this is that joint there, the middle of the west elevation here. That's just really to sort of break the two compositions apart. Separation.
I think a little bit of that lighter color is maybe good. I think it almost kind of bridges up the darker color.
Right, right. And again, this brick, I'm sure you've all seen before, but it's really hard to depict and render. Really good change.
Sample is a good thing to have.
Yeah. Changes against the shade.
Is that the brick, the only brick that'll be used on the whole project?
Correct.
Oh, nice.
It is on the base floor, the ground floor, all around the entire project.
But there's red brick on top of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Louis asked for some courtyard elevation, so we've provided those here. This is the north courtyard elevation. You can see the south side of the lobby, amenity room. This is the west, southwest top. It's really just a reflection of what you saw on the outside. No major changes here. We provided some enlarged elevations. If you were to see a little greater detail, you can see, you know, where the joint lines will be in the cement board around the windows. See the floor line there, the spruce color. Where we're going to find blueers for kitchen toilet exhaust, then you can start to see the entries into the walk-up units. That was espresso color. This is the smoke color, same concept. And then here's link, again, the changes really from the cement fiber board. Otherwise, the materials were generally the same strategies for entries and ventilation.
Stay.
This is the new amenity building. Again, this is a single-loaded piece that was not. Their last sentence was not interesting. And then here's another enlargement for you, a little bit of greater detail. So the left is the southwest satellite entrance. And then the right is just a few feet down. That's the opening to the courtyard. So that will be.
And that is, is that, I see the fence along there. So that's kind of intended just to be a view corridor in a way, right?
Correct, yeah.
I, I like that. I mean, I think this idea of putting the kind of, I mean, even if you go to other cities and you see these parks, which are kind of fun, that are kind of backy. But at least you can kind of see into it a little bit.
Yeah.
I think that's nice.
You, you'll be able to look from the amenity building, through the courtyard, through that opening, and you'll see the park up in front of the office.
Yeah, great. That's good.
But it's also emergency access.
Also emergency access. Yeah, this city did not, or fire department did not ask for. This is really to help maintenance. And, and site easement access for the garage.
Is it black? It looks like it's black aluminum. So for the frames and the panels next to it, that is black.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, exactly. The, the windows are a consistent width all the way up, regardless of if they're Juliet or window. But they do slide side to side within that frame. So the black frame that surrounds everything is a, it's ornamental. It's not part of the window at all. The window itself is just what you can see in that place there.
Okay, are there any other elevation items we need to see?
No, this is the other, this is an enlargement here.
On the east side, there must be. Oh, okay.
Yeah, the stoops and the main doors, it's there. Little bit greater detail, shows some of the landscaping. Just overall, so that's. That's it for residential.
Okay.
I, I have more details. Louis asked for sections and stuff. If you want to go through them, they're in the center.
Anybody want to see sections? We have architects here. I was not hearing him say yes. We're going to keep moving.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for the applicants? Did you have any other, anything specific you wanted to say then?
No.
Okay. At least.
And I guess what the strategy on screening and technical started to mention, the green. It's visible from. And maybe from the stands of the stadium.
Yeah, we're trying to keep everything in that center spine above the building. So even actually like the larger units that condition the amenity building are up there. So that there's nothing in the courtyard that you can receive. The only thing that we couldn't get out of the courtyard is Jeff here. So that's actually, he is, Dr. Mike Seth, is reading, not for that show. But otherwise, everything's on the roof or internal to the dome.
Okay.
All right.
Good question. Thank you. Any other question, anything from the audience? Could we get a motion on the floor from this group, and then we'll give four comments, if you could? Move approval. Okay, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second, please? Thank you, Ted. That's Ted. Okay. Any other questions, Jalen? Go ahead, please.
Two quick comments. I know that in your last, when you were here last, you said that you were interested in treating that facade where the parking garage is, softening it. And it looks like you've put landscaping and other site amenities there. So I just was wondering if there was anything on that that you would like to point out to us that, you know, you feel addresses that. And then the other question was, and I don't know if this is part of your scope of work, but from that, I guess it's called building block A, to the waterfront, you know, there's a roadway. And I'm wondering if you've thought about having some of the accent crosswalks in the brick, just to sort of give it like more of a seamless connection. That, okay, you know, you've got this road, but this is all almost like an integrated element, the park area and the building.
With regards to the garage, we actually, the city was before you guys a couple months ago, before the approval of that garage. And we did work with them for months to go through the design. And I think at the end of the day, we all really have to weigh that point. So they, they are plating the west and north side of the garage with a screen that we worked out with them. So we're pretty pleased with that. And we've had to maintain easements around that within the courtyards so that they can access and maintain the facade. But Jeff's team has done a great job at sort of concealing that shade now, so that it's not so visible, such a harsh edge. And with regards to the crosswalks, there are some between the street at the corners of Cahill and Nordak. Go across Neeland.
Yeah, by and large, the strategy on this side of the district was to utilize inner pavers in the parallel parking spaces and in the alley that connects the stadium to the park. And that's sort of, by and large, everything else is asphalt. And so that's just sort of the strategy for, from a, you know, specialty paving that we took. So we kept kind of the fussy brick crosswalks out of the streets. I think over time, it's questionable whether it's a great idea in any way, because there's so much pressure, but I intersections and pavers and whatnot. So that was the strategy we deployed here.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Anything from the audience? Hey, let's vote. All those in favor, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We want to condition it, that they'll return.
Okay, it's graphics and is it lighting? Oh, we did light. And that's the only lighting, this, this uplighting stuff. Okay, so it's just graphics then?
Yep.
Happy to come back.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next case then? It's next case, the same group here? Okay, so you've already been sworn in, so go ahead. I'm going to switch, Sam.
So proposing a five-story, one-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-thirty-four square foot office building with sixteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy feet square feet of vertical retail log space along West Nationwide Boulevard. They are seeking final approval of the building and associated landscaping will return with graphics and lighting at a later date? Okay. Building materials have not changed, so I won't get into detail. They have provided a planting schedule. And the largest change, as opposed, is they increased the area of the first floor, commercial space. And the brick plaza space that was up in south has been replaced with landscaping, consisting of vegetative areas intersected by concrete, walkways, past them transit levels. It appeared conceptual in December 2020. Feedback, Leperson said he liked the terraces and wondered if the slab shouldn't match the angular nature of the windows. Whitman said he liked the straight line. He asked about the change in grade. And then Leperson, in part of the steam, said they thought the obstacle was gray. Changes since the conceptual review include landscaping modifications, removal of plaza, expansion of the ground for commercial, and slight changes to the exterior design. I think now there, if the building goes in and out of it, there's some recess there. Staff analysis, pretty much the same as the previous one, so I won't repeat that. And in summary, the proposal generally meets the guidelines with regards to building design, materials, and landscaping. The applicant should return for final approval of graphics and lighting.
Okay, very good. We have one new applicant here to join us. Would you raise your, or would you identify yourself, please?
My name is Dan Gore, and I'm with Zoo.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here this morning. Stated, my name is Dan Gore. I'm with City Company. I did notice that in the agenda, there's a little bit of a mix-up. The applicant is actually the Confluence Development LLC. I think that was a carryover from another project that is also in front of you.
So. So was it again, we correct?
It's the Confluence Development LLC, same as previous.
What's she wanting to say for the previous?
Yes.
Okay, so that was incorrect.
Yeah.
A lot of incorrect.
And its Gatch partners are not only mutual. Gatch partners are not only mutual.
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Jumped up, great. Right, yeah. Okay, just across the street from the project you just reviewed is the office building. Through all of this. Okay, just a reminder on the design concept from last year. Basically, we're just trying to find a way to correlate and unify the organic park, so park side river facing part of the site with the more angular, sort of rigid architecture of the stadium. And we came up with this ripple concept. The sod basically articulates in and out. And it creates this ledgeability of this ripple effect on the slab edge that's consistently straight. And those change from floor to floor, so there's not a consistent vertical line that alternates from slab to slab. This is a updated rendering of what we saw last time. This is the southeast corner. Just past the building to the right, you can see the parking garage that's been approved with the other construction by the city. To the right is the southwest gate of Lower.com Field. And down the street to the left is the river. Not a whole lot has changed. We can get into that after we discuss the site from a, from a material palette standpoint. I think the biggest change is we are now using copper color. I think before we had wood paneling for the sockets that you see here. And we can send these materials around. And this was really a matter of finding a color, texture, and a pattern that we liked, and finding a way to get a seamless system put together and not having to marry wood with metal. And if, the wood was really a message of when we were looking at the building being mass timber, that's not the case. It's the full composite steel now. So anyway, just to simplify, there's been some change to a warm tone. Otherwise, building is, is as it was before. Here is the building sitting in the site now. Jeff will look through the landscaping. I think the biggest change here, Louis did mention, on the east and west, we bumped out, saw ten feet from the south, we bumped it down five feet. And I believe, when we met with you guys the first time, the north elevation was engaging the columns along Cahill. We brought those down so that the columns are exposed all the way around the building. And then the other change is at one point, we had an internal loading dock that is gone. We have a small Sally Port on the right. The main entrance from our perspective will be from the north as users move in and out of the parking garage. But the more ceremonial entrance will be to the south, which is landscapes.
Great, thanks. So Louis mentioned that we've sort of, you know, made a modification to the plaza from more hardscape plaza to a more landscaped plaza. Really, the way I'm thinking about it now is that we've got a lower street scale along Nationwide Boulevard and up in front of the building of the landscaped four court. That, that building sits within. That, that building sits within, there's a lot of open space and opportunity to get outside in this district, primarily around the stadium, hardscape space, along the park, makes it hard and soft. So we thought this to be the right balance for this office building along Nationwide Boulevard. Along Neeland Drive, there's a more flexible lawn panel. You can imagine a fitness class or something moving outside to act in that space in the upper left-hand side of the image. Just a quick note, since we mentioned it last time, about the alley that connects Crew Way down to Neeland. That's going to be a really wonderful alley in, in the same, you know, light as many other great, you know, alleys that we built along Smollet, Lubbock, et cetera. And so replacing brick pavers and all kinds of wonderful details that you would expect in a development like this. And the bottom, you can see the palette of materials. These are all generally things that you've seen before. And again, we're really excited about the planting palette here. This is going to be filled with color, seasoning, variety, scale, and feel a little bit more like a natural park environment rather than the more formal landscape that you see closer to the arena in the district. Same request here for lighting, if you will. We've got some followered pathway lighting and some landscape lighting, typical uplights. And we're also proposing a handrail light for our two sets of stairs. So if you would, please consider those as a final recommendation. Happy to discuss in detail. Also, taking this opportunity with such a, you know, dynamic building to also have some creative furnishings. So you'll see a variety of different pieces that will occupy the space in different zones around the landscape around the office building. Similar to our last package, we've got a little bit of operating here, as you all may remember. The bottom right-hand side of the image, that eastern intersection, if you will, is the low point of the site. There's six feet of grade change along Nationwide Boulevard. So we've got a fair amount of stairs and things to help deal with that grade transition. We've done our best to integrate that into the landscape as furnishing and activation rather than just sort of functional stairs. So this starts to illustrate the details thereabouts. Sure.
So it looks like, I'm not sure if I'm correct, it looks like you have the handicap accessible ramp coming from the west?
That's right.
To the building. And of course, because of the grade change on the east, it would probably be impossible to do that. But I know, right, of course, you have the stadium and then you have a lot of people walking over wanting to use the amenities. So do you have a good way for people walking across to the west to this building that if they want to use the restaurants or any amenities to access a handicap ramp without going all the way to the west?
Yeah, there's two ways to, two sort of primary ways, if you will, to access the site at the point of that work. We have nine feet of grade change between curb elevation and front door, which would be, you know, an inordinate amount of ramp. So what we've done is really created a high-quality landscape, streetscape environment along the alley. So Louis, if you would point to the north entry in and out of the building, that curb connects also directly to parking garage, pedestrian accessways. And then also on the west side of the building from the park, we have at-grade access. So we're sort of dealing with that in as sensitive a site way as we can. And also recall that at that alley intersection, sorry to go back to the north entrance to the building, there is a crosswalk there from the stadium over to the alley so that you can, in theory, directly access the level of accessibility.
So the north entrance is accessible?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
And, and we kind of imagine the core in the garage feels, is just across the corner there. So they could come through the crosswalk undercover of our building. And if they needed to get to the front and the south instead of the north, they could do that.
They could, no, or they could go around undercover all the way around.
All the way around. If they didn't want to go through the north lobby entrance, they could go undercover all the way around to the south.
Okay. I was just going to add, too, Ted sort of put this right there. There's a crosswalk at that north east corner as well.
Yeah.
It connects back to the VIP entry to the stadium, which is, has handicap accessibility. And so that crosswalk becomes really important, you know, connecting the two spaces, the two sides. And the center line, I should also mention, that the center line of Cahill Drive centers right on that VIP entry as well. So the entire district is planned in a thoughtful way, it's, you know, to connect to people in less.
Thank you.
I think that's a great story.
Okay.
Hey, Jeff.
Okay.
Jeff?
Yes, thank you.
With the, you do a lot of funding, the sidewalk on the east side, certainly on the south side, even on the west side. You don't have that angular sort of following the sidewalk going on.
Yeah.
It disconnects.
Yeah, great, great question. So the strategy that we've kind of deployed in the district, we had this challenge in front of the arena, if you remember. You've got 200 feet of, you know, kind of dead wall space, really more than that. So we articulated sort of in a tectonic kind of way the landscape there. So it sort of wiggles in and out with that angular motion that you're mentioning, Tony. And, and what we've done in front of the office building and along the office building on the right-hand side, along Nationwide and up in front of the parking garage, places where you're not directly engaged with like an active building front, is utilize that same landscape. And then as we've transitioned around to the buildings, I'm sorry, the residential buildings, we've sort of moved to a more neighborhood scale, less bussy landscape situation. So it really transitions into something on the west side of the building, west side of the office building, and around the rest of the residential buildings into something that feels a lot more like, you know, the gay street townhome. So it's a really simple, lush landscape environment. And that's the strategy.
If you go back to the original site plan, the larger scale site plan at the beginning, but yeah, this is even helpful right here. You start to see that each street has its own character. Columbus Crew Way has this angular landscape architecture that plays off of the stadium. And so we're working to kind of knit that experience across the street. Similar, we're playing off the landscape architecture of the new park that the city building on the west side there along the river. And how that carries through from the residential side to the office space. And those two sort of worlds intersect in front of the office building is the intent. So that we're really collecting all that to create another certain, like, entry, a certain place in front of the building. So it's really trying to thoughtfully knit together the landscape architecture of the stadium with that park, the more natural landscape architecture of the park with more regular streetscape condition of residential.
Okay.
Worked really hard on that, Quip.
Worked hard on that?
Jeff got beat up a few times.
Worked hard on that nice straight sidewalk, huh?
Yeah.
No, I hear what you're saying. By the way, I think it makes sense. I'm not, I'm pulling away. Okay, other comments or questions from you folks?
Nothing for us.
Anything from the commission here? Questions, thoughts? We have seen this about three.
Yeah, I think the same if we're approving.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's good. Anything from the audience? Any questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
A second.
And there's a second from Ted.
We return with the graphics.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
With the lighting, something. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to Louis. Next case is going to be conceptual review? Oh, this is conceptual, then? Yes. Would you identify, I think for conceptual, we swear people, I always don't.
Yeah.
I think we do. Would you identify yourselves, please, for the record?
Steve Murgar with Schooling Caldwell Associates.
Thank you.
Jordan Edmonds, Franklin County Convention Facilities. Great.
Do you, would you raise your right hands, please? Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So say aye.
I do.
I thank you. Okay.
So this is the location here, 400 North High Street. We have the convention center. Here's North Third Street. This isn't visible here, but there is a new parking garage approved by the downtown commission several years ago. And there goes an LED display on the north portion of the building.
Is that the only, that's the only thing that is the, that we were looking at?
Yes, there's also two existing that are going to this south elevation of the building as well.
Is that part of what we're talking about today?
It is as well, yes.
Okay.
I did make a site visit to this, to the location, so let me pull this up here so you can see. So this is the parking garage. The LED display would go right here. Here you can see the front, same thing, LED display right there. Here's kind of a view from farther away. And then here I went and I went to the top of the parking garage, took some pictures of the view so you could see what this would be, the audience, intended audience would be. So we've got Third Street here, you know, we have some building to the distance. Looking down, you can see the train tracks, the turnaround area for the convention center. Looking north, you know, you have a lot of the convention center, but you do have some buildings there. So the applicant is seeking conceptual review of a proposal to install a 440 square foot LED display on the northern elevation of the Ohio Center Garage. The screen will be located on the seventh floor of the garage, measure 40 feet wide by 11 feet high, and use an LG LBS series outdoor display screen. The proposal also includes relocating existing signs from the loading dock of the convention center. These signs include a wall sign stating Greater Columbus Convention Center and a movable scrolling marquee measuring 50 feet wide by 4 feet high. The latter would continue to be used to indicate events and vendors within the convention center premises. So per the work description provided by the application, the FCCFA intends for the primary function, more than 50% of the displays, to promote on-premises activities, events, uses, and vendors, VCs, licensees, clients located within the convention center. The FCCFA offers its commitment to the foregoing as a use restriction. Examples of an on-premises content, greater than 50%, includes, but is not limited to, event information, messages for event attendees, advertising for food court vendors, and advertising for trade show vendors participating in events. The FCC acknowledges and agrees that less than 50% of the content will be for sale, lease, or rental for the purpose of promoting any business or other activity which is not situated within the convention center or promoting any product or service which is not primarily available at the convention center and is likewise committed to this requirement. So as we've discussed a lot in the past with these LED displays, City Code states that a billboard means an off-premises sign which consists of one or more sign faces primarily intended by the sign owner to be available for sale, lease, or rental for the purpose of promoting any business or other activity which is not situated on the same property as the billboard or promoting any product or service which is not primarily available on the same property as the billboard. And incidentally, you display the public service message. So the proposal in question intends for the majority of advertising to be on-premises advertising. And therefore, it does not meet the definition billboard. So it would not have to do the counsel variance process. With regards to the design guidelines, they state that commercial signage in the downtown should be pedestrian-oriented and communicate simple succinct messages in an aesthetically balanced manner. Installation of additional outdoor electronic displays and video screens is generally discouraged by the guidelines. Considerations of such should be limited to the core area of downtown, specifically the High Street corridor and Arena District. Use of such displays for off-premise advertising is not appropriate, and such displays should be approved for a time period not to exceed five years. So in summary, the proposal does not meet the guidelines with regards to outdoor electronic displays and video screens. It lies outside the High Street corridor and Arena District, is not pedestrian-oriented with regards to its size and placement, will display off-premises advertising, and is generally discouraged. That we do have the applicant marriage to present the proposal.
Thank you. Chairman Whitman, members of the commission. The convention center occupies a very unique space, not just geographically within the downtown district, but culturally as well. And what we're really looking at is nothing has ever happened in isolation with respect to the convention center since 1970. The building, the Ohio Center, the original portion that you see there in concrete, quite quickly now.
I'm sorry, you can keep flipping, you can flip if you want. You have to, I was just going to go to the main event.
If, yeah, if you, I think it'd be really helpful, even while we're getting started, if you could show us, you know, the, an image of what these are, where they're going to be and what they're going to look like. That has a lot to do with this whole thing here.
So I can say the first thing, and I can't highlight it, but can I? The scrolling marquee that you see on the back there that said Greater Columbus Convention Center and had information that generally showed what events were happening within the facility was obscured when we built this garage back in 2018. The purpose of this garage was to provide an enabling project essential that then allows the hotel that's currently being built on the other side. And I want to stick with this image for a second because one of the assertions of staff is that the downtown guidelines are very much written for a traditional downtown environment that you see on High Street and you see almost everywhere else in the downtown area. This is really on an approach to downtown. And while the west side of Ohio Center Way, which you see over by the high of High Street, is designed as a pedestrian-oriented experience, the east side of Ohio Center Way, the elevated roadway over the garage, has always been and will continue to be primarily a vehicular entrance and exit. So the pedestrian-scale guidelines written for the downtown commission really don't make sense at this particular location. You're also approaching this up and over the railroad tracks from Third. And so the audiences, and I think as you saw in Louis's presentation, that this is for, is southbound traffic entering into downtown. And then people who are on the arrival to the convention center itself. So when we've obscured the vision about what events are happening within the convention center, this display that acts as replacement. Now, with respect to the idea of on-premise and off-premise, there is some nuance there that I'll let Jordan get into in a minute about why the convention center would like to reserve this off-premise. There is, there's some history with Tourism Ohio that I think Jordan could go into. Specifically then, when we, when we made this garage, we knew this was a feature that was something we should have come for. It wasn't in the application at the time. It wasn't a fully baked idea. But we did nest into the architecture of the building by providing a solid backdrop against it and providing a taller vertical element, stair power against which it can best. So it was always intended to work within the architecture of what was planned there. And kind of the floating planes of rectangles, as you see that the north face provides, was to complement this in size proportion to the display that was intended.
And you're talking about that big brick wall to the left of the staircase.
Yes, so that was our initial concept right there when we came in for review in 2018. Here's the as-built, a little bit closer of how it looks. This was just to highlight, we did put in, you know, a very dynamic facade that kind of flows in the wind. This is on a good day with the wind and the sky all aligned. And then that's where we're talking about nesting this, this display screen. So the display screen is up high. It's off to the side. There is no pedestrian activity to speak of on this site, so it's not necessarily appropriate for that. I think the other thing to, when you look at the guidelines, it talks about how displays should be limited for a time period of five years. And I think these guidelines were largely written for static print items. So when you approve for a display and it's for off-premise, you don't want to enable that forever because the conditions of whose advertising it may change. So you want that to expire. Here, it doesn't necessarily make sense for it to expire because it is intermixed with the permanent display items for the on-premise events. And if you have something that says it's, you know, for a display of five years, these events are coming and going every week. And it's important for the convention center to be able to drive traffic. to be able to drive traffic, not just within the convention center, but that activity generates economic activity for the remainder of downtown. And there's no bigger single driver probably than the convention center to driving dollars into the rest of downtown. I think, Jordan, you might touch on the idea of signage and Tourism Ohio tie in.
Excuse me, is that drawing that you have there, that looks like your image of that sign is too big to me. Is it actually that big? Is that just scale?
That is, that is, that is the size of it.
Right. 11 by 44, right?
11 by 44.
Okay.
So if you.
I'm just looking at the, I don't know, what have them opening there on the levels there.
So level to level, so the opening, remember, is, is, has a concrete crash barrier. It takes about half of the height of a floor-to-floor hall. So when you look at an opening, if I were to stand on top of that crash barrier, my head might be scraping level above that.
Okay.
Not that I'd do that, it'd be a safety violation, but I didn't want trouble.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Here's the aerial view with it in context as well as you're looking southbound on Third Street. This was some drone footage that was taken that shows the as-built condition of the garage. And then its connection is through that elevated pedestrian walkway into the convention center. So that's the primary pedestrian activity is already inside the building by the time you're in the garage here. This would, you know, the Arnold is a major event certainly, but it would be used for any event that could be happening within the convention center. So that's size and height. There would be a final application that would come through with any sort of connection details, but this is thought of as being incredibly flush, mounted to the garage, not projecting. Then finally, here are the existing signs. The goal would be to relocate these existing signs on the south face of the garage. They fit largely within the banding of the concrete crash wall. So they're four-foot signs and the concrete crash walls are upturned 48 inches as well.
And would they say the same thing?
They would be the exact same physical signs. So you have one that is an internally illuminated, this is Greater Columbus Convention Center.
Static, right?
They would be split.
No, no, I mean the top, Greater Columbus Convention Center is static, is that right? And then the one underneath it is the one that has.
Correct.
Okay. And the one that is underneath it only mentions things that are occurring inside the convention center.
That is also correct.
Okay, thank you, so. Yeah, and.
And just to touch on the content of the displays, the display board. As the CFA has indicated in our application, the primary focus of this, primary use of this, I, more than 50% would be for promotion, advance of information related to occurrences of the convention center, of the vendors we have located there already, other users of the facility. Steve did mention Tourism Ohio as a, as a secondary purpose, which we agree would be off-premise advertising. A few years ago, about 10 years ago, when the conventional authority purchased Nationwide Arena, the state of Ohio provided a loan for the purchase of the arena. A portion of the loan is to be forgiven if the arena meets certain employment benchmarks. I believe in 2017 or 2018, a secondary loan forgiveness agreement was negotiated with the state that included an advertising package at the conventions center for Tourism Ohio. That advertising package is for a period of 10 years or until the total value of the advertisements equals the amount of the loan forgiveness. So we would propose to include some Tourism Ohio advertising on the display screen until the term of that loan forgiveness agreement is reached.
So does that mean that after 10 years or so, it would be totally basically on-premise kind of items? Here's what I'm concerned, oh, my question was when I read through this. You, you talk about primary, okay? And primary is, you know, you go 50%. So let's say 49% is something else. Or is there no, I, I guess what I'm wondering is what, what shows up there? If you say, okay, it's the Tourism Ohio stuff, okay, I get that, and I don't have a problem with that. But, I mean, do, do you then see beer commercials? Do you see, I, I, I just think we ought to. If, if you come in and you say, look, these are, these are items related to the convention center, or maybe it's this. And by the way, I get the connection between the tourism elements and the convention center. That's, to me, that's a pretty easy connection. But, but what I don't get is, or what I'm questioning is, or trying to understand is, is there any other restriction beyond that? Or do you just go ahead and, you know, we see beer commercials or whatever it is, car commercials or whatever?
There certainly would not be any beer commercials. I think any, any subsequent advertising after the Tourism Ohio would comply with the existing branding and marketing guidelines of the convention center which prohibit offensive scene content, cigarettes, beer. But I think primarily any goal would be to relate it to occurrences at the convention center, event sponsors, vendors at a trade show. We don't have any current plans to sell or.
Do you have a problem restricting this to that? I don't believe so. To what you just, to the way you just described it?
I don't believe so.
I, I think if you were willing to do that, that might make this, at least from my standpoint, kind of an easy situation. I, I, I think, I think it makes sense to have a, some kind of graphic up there. I like announcing it. I, I have been opposed to and very reluctant to do LED advertising. And I'm, I don't really even want to get into this discussion about what there is. I don't even care about that issue with respect to this. But I, I don't like to see stuff, big flashing signs all around the internet. I think that's a bad thing. I don't really see this that way. I see this as a, by the way, I don't think the sign is too big. I think it's pretty reasonably sized. I mean, I, you know, typically we'd have somebody who would want to cover that whole wall there. And you folks, I don't, in my mind.
Well, you guys can suggest.
I beg your pardon. I'm not, I'm. But at any rate, I think if you would be willing to say that, you know, it's somehow or another related to stuff with me in some form or another, make that, you know, apply with that restriction. I, I think that's, from my standpoint, that, does that make sense to anybody else?
To me.
So it doesn't become a, it basically doesn't become an advertising. And, and I understand primarily 49%.
Would it be appropriate then at the time of final application for the convention center to submit their guide, their brand guidelines? So that you have that as a piece of information?
I think we're really talking about perhaps more than that because you're talking about, you know, you've got brand guidelines, but then what we're also talking about is, is things that are somehow or another related to the convention center or to tourism in Ohio, let's say. I mean, does that cause a problem for you? I'm, no, but don't, we would be willing to make that concession. Does that make sense for people to look at? This is a conceptual thing, so.
It does to me because when I read it too, when, you know, they're saying, you know, you think of 49% that could be advertising for things that have nothing to do with tourism or nothing to do with the convention center, so it just becomes this large advertising billboard, even though it's not a billboard, you know, 49% of the time it is really functioning like a, a big LED type of a billboard. So I agree that with restrictions to keep it to tourism or things that relate to the city or the convention center, it makes sense. But was, did you have the expectation that a percentage of this was going to be advertising for revenue or if, was it okay to restrict it?
So I think we were, we were pretty neutral about that other percent. What we're really trying to, to show here is that it meets definition with a sign and not a billboard, and that's where that language came from, 49 versus 51. So our application is, is really to say that this is appropriate place in downtown. This is a unique place in downtown. And so this particular sign on this particular building is appropriate.
What we can do is, so the, I think on that, for approval, that approval, if they agree to setting those limitations, their proposal, they can lay out those conditions on their application. I'll work with the applicant, city attorney's office. He has to make sure we have that right to limit it to the kind of content that you're discussing, Ohio tourism. That's a difference.
And then we can approve it, is that right, one? Or not?
Application, or next amendment?
Yeah.
If, if you feel that it meets, you know, the guidelines and the definitions contained in the code, which again, definition billboard, from what we're talking about, is, you know, the primary intent. And I think the focus of that is whether or not it is intended to be for lease or sale for off-premises advertising. So if their application is clear to you that it is not going to be for billboard purposes, then you can improve it.
Yeah, and just like I.
Does that work for you, five sign?
Yep.
And just like I included the, the, the language directly from their application this time, I can include that in the staff report as well next time so you can review that language and make sure that you're comfortable with it. Sorry, I have a question, does the, so would the sign have multiple, can change over to multiple images or something, point to the time or the time? And then to another?
It certainly has the ability to have multiple images. I think that there are, there are probably restrictions you have on the frequency, how often it turns. I know, the mission I sit on, there are a lot of things we look at that, you know, more frequently than eight seconds. And one of, you know, it's not flashing graphics, it's not big animated graphics. It's essentially stills, but the stills could change over time.
It's typically eight seconds in the city. It's typically no video.
And then, one of the things, let's say against just a single static image that's up forever, there are multiple events often happening at the same time within the convention center. Exhibit holes A and B may be doing one thing while C and D in the south building are doing something different. So it's appropriate to try to give equal play or weighted play based on who's using.
And so would there be, maybe, thought that some of the images would be for events that are coming into your future?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'd say that's even more important than the ones that are there. You've already driven the traffic, by the time you're there, you want to look to know what's going on.
But it'd be informational too, though, if somebody's coming downtown. Especially if you're from out of town.
So I, I used to look at the scrolling display years and years ago to figure out what was going on in the convention center. And now that that's covered up, it's no longer, there's no information. How do you know what's going on?
I, I see that, I see how it makes sense, I'm not a. Okay. Any other questions or for the applicant? Okay, this was conceptual, you've heard, I think, some thoughts and.
Our goal today is to, to get your general assessment of how, how you feel towards this, and I think we, we've got a little lead from that. So we'll come back to the final application, we'll look for connection.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, we have one more, don't we? Lewis?
Yeah, one more.
Is this also a, is this also a conceptual? Okay.
That's got. Okay, so the final case today is 340 East Fulton. Hold it up here on the map. It's on the southern side of the downtown district, right off of Fulton and South Grant Avenue. Are mixed-use, I think, developments in the area. They directed to the south. Site visit. Give you an idea. They're seeking conceptual review of a proposal to construct a four-story mixed-use structure totaling 97,398 square feet. It would result in the demolition of a two-story brick building constructed in 1977 and the associated surface parking. It's going to be an affordable apartment complex that will have 68, 6 units on floors two, two, four, operating in base of one, two, and three bedroom apartments. Ground floor will have six or four parking spaces screened by built-in amenities and 1,592 square feet. It will have courtyard amenities based on the second floor. And materials will be of mixed-up, basic green metal siding, split-faced CMU, metal clad windows, and composite wood siding. Will be 2020 Ohio Positive Agency Designing. There are analysis we've struck it for that. So here's a site visit. This is the existing building at the corner. Same view. Close up so you can see some of the details of the architecture and the landscaping. This is the east elevation. South elevation, you can see the associated parking here in this area. Here is the parking and setback with the road route, some landscaping and screening. Here you can see, you can see some of the sidewalks have been recently improved in the area with implantings of trees. Here I'm looking south. You can see the interstate to the south, see some of the streets and some of the upgraded. Here I'm looking north on that same street, you can see the upgraded sidewalk. Some more some of the brick papers. Here's what you see to the south, you see the interstate. Here's what you see to the southeast, you can see some more interstate. Here you can see the hospital across the interstate. This is directly to the east, or this is directly to the west. You can see it's kind of a older, all that family development. This is the connection, this is the north property line. And here's where you can see across the street to the east, this. Good, so. So the staff analysis, the demolition guidelines state that the commission should consider if the proposed demolition will allow for new development, which, in the commission's opinion, is of greater significance to the character of the surrounding area. They should also consider whether the building being demolished is without distinguishing architectural character. And then the guidelines are the same. High-quality materials, attention to detail. However, they do also state reduction and/or elimination of existing private curb cuts in the downtown district is encouraged as sites are redeveloped. We develop, this site has two curb cuts currently. You are proposing the site with two curb cuts. So we would ask you to consider if those two curb cuts are necessary. So they will have to determine, the commission will have to determine whether the proposed building justifies the demolition of the existing structure. In general, the new building meets guidelines. However, staff are encouraged that the commission can consider whether, one of the curb cuts should be removed. And if the split-faced CMU is an appropriate material, if there is room for improvement of the street gate, and if you want to push for better quality materials with that, have the applicant.
Would you please identify yourself for the record? Self?
Joseph Wickham, Fairfield Homes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Joseph Wickham, Fairfield Homes.
Okay.
David Blair with Shunsho Hardware.
Mike Williams, Fairfield Homes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mike Williams, Fairfield.
Okay.
No, I got you in the second.
Oh, David Blair.
Yeah. Okay. Would, would you raise your right hands? You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and so say I do. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you very much for the project review. I just have a point or two to it, or?
Eight points.
That's okay.
Not normal.
That's okay, I'll, I'll walk through. The, looking at the first, the first floor plan, I was going to bring it to the, to the right of that plan, East Fulton. East Fulton, as much you know, has been recently, kind of new streets gave, is now a single, is now a one-way street headed out east, and then there's a ramp, there's good amount of highways, very particularly facing south, Fulton Street. You're right across Fulton Street, but we're looking the highway and then across towards the Children's Hospital complex. the highway and then across towards the children's hospital complex. Slightly to the east. So we're reacting really on that side of the building a lot to a scale that's not as pedestrian. Along Grant is a little more pedestrian at that street, at that location, we've located the retail amenity along that street. Entry to the building on the corner, kind of create a strong, strong corner. Particularly then with with a view that's going to have to have to be accessed from a particular standpoint. There are two existing curb cuts on the site. Right now, they are both illustrated. It's like dog up into the north side. But we are proposing both those to remain, so we're not impacting the streetscape and carrying out what's already been installed. There's been discussion with regard to eliminating one of those entries. Thinking in that, if you probably want Fulton Street side, first of all, that could have some benefits to our building. From the side, eliminating a curb cut through the middle of it. But we really need to get back and kind of have some, I think, conversations with traffic as to as if they see any any concerns with the proximity of a singular curb cut on Grant, particularly coming across from the south. So we want to have those discussions before we commit to eliminating the curb cut and kind of think of the grand maintaining as Grant is a two-way street and maintains the access. The parking again is, we're really not invisible. Close off with garage doors from both Grant and Fulton on the backside of it. Be secure, but we're proposing to have it partially open with a lot of iron type fencing, really similar to what is occurring both to the north of us, the development that really wrapped our site. Those of you who want to go to an aerial.
Oh, you can.
Okay, oh, I. Yes, okay, I got that part. You go to the aerial picture on the right and shows the the existing development that really wraps this entire half block of space and wraps around our building. So we make some gestures to that, what's going on with that, that building. But again, you can see through the pictures on the really lights, top to the bottom. That is partially also that building on the bottom, you can see the fencing, there's a low wall with piers and some but aren't fencing in between. That's what we're picking up a little bit surrounding the building. The notations for the split face block are really towards that, continuing that on the sections of the building that are adjacent to that. So you can see that here on what I'm starting to size kind of split in three elements, but the two, two elements that are on the corners, then order that, that other development. The complex essentially is a U-shaped with a terrace in the middle facing north. You know, we talked about lobby spaces coming into the the southeast corner of the building with your mails and community space. That area office. And then access into the lobby treasure, et cetera. Our elevations really kind of respond to three things are it is a tax credit project. Masonry across the majority of the building, just somewhat somewhat problematic with related to budgets. So we've really carried a masonry across the ground floors. So we've got a lot of brick across the ground floor elements up on the top. The center portion of that is the retail elements, storefront, kind of modern lighting of it. I think the 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 center element, which in the renderings is the blue, it's a metal panel, sticks out over. That's where comes the property lines, the rest of the building steps back slightly from that. Now that really covers your entry. You can have your lighting for your retail underneath that, so it's kind of takes on a modern effect of that. For lighting the storefronts and then lighting along the street on Fulton also. So that brick then wraps up around the corner element to to give it give it a solid corner with the the black boom storefronts and the windows. I would try to add that the blue color you see is metal panel, vertical, supposed to be vertical sided, has some some softening of that, which a little difficult to see, I think, in this with some, probably some wood appearance, metal panels that are next to the windows. They give the windows a little bit of variance in their in their appearance. And then and that's kind of again, try to give it this this corner some punch since primarily what you're looking at it is particularly from a, from the highway, it's got to have some some presence on that direction. But then I think it'll help.
Is the red part correct?
Sorry, the red part of the brick, yeah. Red part brick, the blue part's vertical metal panel, probably full of seam load. And then as you go to the back, it's going to a little, a little more of a residential already plank siding between between a lap and a system.
Okay. Is that is that your, well, this part is the hard part?
So you're looking, yeah, the the this would be further on both sides of coming down Grant. So the corner of Grant is picking up the the split face CMU at the bottom, garage door, blue bird, and then above is the hardy. And that occurs probably to the to the back, we just changed it again to a hardy. And then once you get to the inside of the I think I have it inside of the yeah, once you get back to the inside of the courtyard space, goes back to the pedal. Yeah, I think you can see a little bit of the ashes kind of softening that metal, and that could really have to vary any any distances with some, with a little bit of wood, metal panel, but it would, would appearance go. Lightened up a little bit.
It's the top of the the garage.
Well, we have, we're going to have a terr, a usable terrace area up there, so we'll have some deckings and terrace space, grill space. So that's some amenity space for the tenants in that area and in some some landscaping. Yeah, probably won't have private, this kind of shows we could have a discussion. Probably won't have privates. That terrace areas will all be public for the for all the tenants. So we'll set up. I did want to mention just, yeah, yeah, there's a little bit, you can see on Fulton Street kind of the bus lane that comes in there. And there's a wider, there's a, there's a fairly nice wide sidewalk to the to our corner on the Fulton Street side. It's much narrower on the on the on the Grant Street side. There are two street trees. They're really, they're almost represented here in a little bump out. They're close to our building. We don't really want to remove it necessarily, but I think we talked to city about moving them out to the curb if they allow us to do that and change the way they function there for us.
And I'm sorry, what, sorry. Does it need more residents and guests going in and out, or just one way?
It it's the ability to go both ways. I've only got it single out to go one way.
East Fulton Street, obviously, the nature of that street is just has changed. And you're essentially on the street this. And it almost an extension of a highway.
Yeah.
Do you in your communications with, you know, hold out or appropriate amenities, the speed going to be like on that street? It's already one way. And I mean, we're in this, still the pandemic's not over, so we're not seeing the full functionality of what that street's going to be. Like, just share with us, you know, kind of what you know as you include.
Um. I don't know that I can answer you in too much detail with the part of what it is and what it's, like you said, it's not activated completely the way that it will be once all that work is done. Firstly, if anybody's saying, I believe the speed limit along that portion is still thirty-five along that portion of Fulton. And then, yes, another block up, you get the ramp. So at least you're coming out rather than going in, in any progress coming faster.
But an interesting part about the new redesign of Fulton is it really, only for the station, it doesn't only have bike lanes, but does that partly along that side of the street still? But moreover, the way that Fulton interacts there at the intersection of Grant, Fulton, you actually have Fulton coming down the other way from the east side as a one lane, which were kind of fifty-five left. And then you also have the on and onto that grid system. So that whole intersection right there is kind of a slow stop area for.
I think the picture behind this starts to help, right? So it's it's one way, it would get to Grant, you can still see parking and there's a bus stop in that vicinity, right? And even what they put off called the parking lane. And there's a bike lane on that street. So there is a, there is a bike lane running down the left side of the street. It's a one-way at that point.
I was there. Was there in Russia, I'm taking. I was kind of surprised by the lap traffic coming down.
Oh, yeah, I I first would see that any, but that doesn't mean that more.
Done. No, not to, I'm just saying.
Some point in time.
Yeah, but I was surprised that I thought that'd be much more intense
Yeah.
traffic, but a lot more coming down Grant.
Won't that be changing my previous? Look at Fulton getting. Fulton will have a, has a ramp. The next block up, it's all getting on.
It's involved.
It's a singular on. So it's a little different than getting an on.
It's likely to get a lot more traffic, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's where we are. If you were.
Yeah.
People getting used to, yeah, for a period of time. The ramp going to seventy east was closed. Bridges. So like, for me, they just find other ways to
Right.
get back east. They're all going to take the streets. I'm going to do this. So I don't know the community is where we learn how to even use Fulton Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
Right. That's why I say it's hard to answer that question.
Yeah.
We're we're not a there's one part of space for every, for every car. The the one. Not a high, it's not a high user of cars from other projects and maybe just has some now some some staff or whatever, but I know from other projects, one for a parker is more than significantly has ever been. We could, we can likely get away with one and not have, I don't think have a lot of heartburn about it. We certainly want to move to one that was there or would have put it in the middle of the building. But we just want to, I want to take all of your your thoughts, though, but need to take those in traffic and just make sure.
Might be interesting to see what traffic says about.
Yeah, that'll, that's.
Yeah, it's a big problem I solve. Gut says have to.
But isn't that parcel prior to the off-ramp? Let's say from the freeway to, so it is a slower, it's not that you're coming off the ramp.
Right.
Onto that area.
Or we have to get down to one lane.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So I think it'll be a little slower than if it's just ongoing, just traffic is going to demolish.
I always think that the presence of on-street parking is, provides a nice buffer.
Yeah.
Tends to naturally little bit. So that's nice as well. Going from that cutout all the way, substantially.
And right across the street, you have Commons and Grant. So that's transitional housing as well. So there won't be as many, as you say, parking, I mean, individuals who are parking at that in particular, housing involved.
And I want to bring up, you guys all are aware, you know, Grant Street, developments on all the way to North on Grant Street, but that's only three lanes, one turn lane between. So right now, there actually isn't an access to the ground on that site from the beginning itself. So another thing that we should think on, partly understanding that.
Yeah, that's what our 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 concern with cutting the other one is, is over to the right, which is the Grant C. In taking a right on the Grant Street and a hundred forty feet where I have to turn into the into that space. So are they comfortable with that, with that stacking? With potentially the curb there?
One thought I.
Um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
About it was, let's say, we have to meet with traffic and they say we can't just go with the grant at the end and out. And you need to have something I told you, I don't know, maybe even though there's the curb cut existing, maybe you can move that entry to to the west and have the curb cut a little bit to the west of what's not right to middle of the facade.
We originally had it there, but then it's like, well, all that work could have done there for that streetscape. So maybe they'd like to preserve that. We can make it work. For us.
But then if you if you were able to do that, then you could, you'd have more of a, you'd be able to develop the Fulton facade, I think, more fully. And maybe some of the built the amenities you've had inside. I think it was a, I forgot what it was, but I think there was some type of commercial space.
The commercial space on the Grant Street side.
On the, there's something on the.
There's a Yeah, we have a we have a small community room. Yeah.
So maybe the community in the office could be a little more elongated and rectangular, so you could get more windows. So that way, so I think you move the curb to the west and then we configure those spaces so that they, you know, are have more content.
Streetscape, right.
Right, and streetscape. So that might be a way. But I know that you're, you know, budget is a very important consideration here, but if it is something you could, you could manage, it might beneficial to that facade.
Yeah, good. Is, now, this is a conceptual review, right? Okay, and so we're not, you're not asking for demolition today. Okay, so this is a conceptual, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Back to the
Bob?
Sort of facade again. Rendering. It shows the the party board part of the building. My reaction to this is, right, first of all, I think it's a great project. I think it's a good use for that site. I'm not going to fight for the building to talk. Those are all good things. I'm a little bit concerned about this piece, so I know you're working to a budget with, you know, trying to make the performance work and all that, but somehow that looks like a sore thumb. It's like an extra piece of building or something.
What is that piece you mean?
Well, the the.
Right on the right.
Yeah, I mean, I think the brick and the corner, the black is really nice. So I think the metal panels work really nicely. But when I get to this, like a luctover. And it seems to be it would be stronger if if you could pull, somehow pull the design together, make it more like one. And I'm saying that recognizing that part of this is by driven, so I'm not sure what, I don't have a suggestion for you, but I would think it'd be stronger if it didn't have to have that change of material.
I really like, I was thinking something similar. I really like that doubled part where you have the black, is that the curtain wall element? And then the brick. And maybe if you can't afford to do that exact thing there, maybe elements of it, like maybe that corner element can be an interesting window that uses the black curtain wall. And then, like Bob was saying, trying to integrate the other part, maybe in color. So that it a little more cohesive and 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 a little, and a little richer, even richer enough, you know, in in color and design.
Appreciate how you started to step on that. That you're looking at towards Fulton Street. I agree with that one, like corner elements, maybe there's different materials or where they're. I know I could, I should find that.
Okay, well, I think you're hearing some comments on that. I I don't think I heard any real objections to how you arrange your curb cuts. We need to work through the traffic thing with that. We understand what we're working with. I think you're hearing. Um, I think you're hearing a comment about that northeast corner there. Um, and as I mentioned, Bob, and I don't mean this as a cast dispersion, but it, 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 it begins to look right there like a low-income housing right there. Um, and if you can kind of wiggle around that one, that kind of, that would be a positive. And you're, but you're hearing some good, good comments too, so. Um, and I, I agree with, I think this is a great use for that, it even fits kind of with the one across the street and so on, so.
Good, yeah, I appreciate this topic, this is.
Okay, and I, and I'm, with respect to demolition, which we also have to agree on, I think I'm hearing that's probably not going to be a problem. Although Bob's very sensitive to these historic things, and at least seventy-five to a hundred years from now, that would become a very historic. So you guys got to put the hustle on.
It's getting close.
We only worry about it fifty years from now, they want to tell us what we're doing.
There you go, there you go.
We're going to start turning down yours, so you know.
There you go. Okay, good, any other comments? Thank you very much for coming in. Good, Lewis, anything else you would want to approve?
Motion to enter the application for a record, that approved.
Can I have an advocate motion to do that?
No, no.
Got a second choice, okay. Questions, comments?
Who's second?
Uh, Tom.
Tony, thank you.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any other business, oh, we need to think about, um, Harrison Smith. Any thoughts on that one? Anybody got an idea?
I thought it was a good list. I don't think we want to vote on it, I'll put the meeting.
Okay.
That, that avoids the surprise, right?
I, I guess it does, yeah. I, I don't know that we need to vote on it, but do we want to, uh, do we want to, can we do discussion or? Anybody have any thoughts? And then, and then what we, what, what do we do, just pass it around? It's, it's a basically kind of informal.
Yeah, so what we can do is just, uh, here's the list, I can send out another email and ask for everyone to give you their vote on it, and they work, um, on it. And then, just like last year, Bob and I, and Steve will all work together to get on the, uh, Metropolitan Club agenda, and, and, um, Bob, if you're still volunteering to do the B certificates?
Yeah.
Okay, then we can go ahead and, uh.
They are so well done, I have to say, it's just, I, every year I look at it, I just.
But is there a specific criteria that you're looking at? To, I mean, I see what's nominated, but really making a decision.
Kind of an informal, um, petition gives for a project we think has had significant positive impact from the downtown. I'm sure we have a criteria of that.
No, it's been pretty loose, it's, it's not, not island formalized.
In the last email, I said, uh, I used some of your language for the last meeting, so I can send that out again, for the last time, we presented for describing ones.
Okay, so think about that, and we'll get that done here in the next couple weeks. Any, any other business?
Just, Louis, when you sent it out, once again, you think it would be good if it's easy to maybe have a photo with it?
I, yeah, I can hide those. And these are finished and delivered projects, so in two thousand twenty-one, that's what got on the list.
No, no, they don't have to be, they could be from previous times, but they, they need to be completed.
That's what, yeah, completed and delivered in twenty-one or?
No, no, no.
Some of them.
We're, we don't, we would not want to, um, give the award to a project that's under construction. So it has to be kind of.
But it could have been completed like in twenty nineteen.
Yes, for twenty, or twenty, twenty-ten.
But then it had to be, um, it had to come before this commission?
No.
Yeah.
I don't think.
Yeah.
Well.
Which has been built with that.
Well, I, that's, that's giving you criteria.
No, that's a good.
Yeah.
And everything is ground up, not major renovation?
No, I think it could be renovation.
Yeah, renovation. Yeah, so like the municipal life plan, who I've been wanting to put them on the list the last two years, but they're still not done.
They're not.
So that's a major renovation, we wouldn't include that. If there's anything that I didn't include on my list, or asking what else would be included. Yeah. If there's anything that I didn't include on the list that you'd like to be added, you can vote for that as well.
It could be something very simple, because the criteria may be maybe negative, passive, and creative.
And we've discussed, you know, do we want to do one or more or two or whatever, so. We've done more than one, I think, in the past, and we.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
I'm kind of in favor of one at a time, but, but we have done more than one. Okay, anything else?
No, sure.
Everybody, thank you very much, we had another meeting.
We've got some things done. Appreciate your help. A lot of any problems.
Good. Bye. My training, nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
Uh, see you, yep.